Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the San Benito CISD Board of Trustees. Today is Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, and I call this meeting to order at exactly 5:36. Roll call. Mr. Ramiro Moreno, President, here. Ms. Janie Lopez, Vice President.
Present.
Mr. Oscar Medrano. Mr. Rudy Corona.
Present.
Dr. Ariel Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Orlando Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Mario Silva.
Present.
Dr. Nate Carmen.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Weller.
Present.
We have a quorum. Moving on to item 1.2. Okay, item 1.2 is a pledge of allegiance. Leading us off with the pledge of allegiance today is Angie Adelina Guitron. Angie is starting the fifth grade this 2021-2022 school year. She is a daughter of Ms. Wendy Juarez and big sister to three-year-old Ariela. Angie has alopecia, which is an autoimmune disease that attacks the hair follicles. This does not stop her. She wears wigs, such as the one she is wearing today, and is comfortable with who she is. She enjoys making friends and going to school to be better than she was the day before. She is well aware that knowledge is power, and no one can take that away from her. Angie enjoys drawing and practicing volleyball as hobbies. She also enjoys spending time outdoors and teaching her sister new vocabulary and pronunciation. Welcome, Angie. Will everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I ask that you remain standing for invocation, but before we do that, let me go ahead and introduce our student. We have, and I hope that I pronounce this correct, is it Jasiel Garcia?
Hasiel.
Hasiel, okay. Hasiel Garcia is nine years old and is an incoming fourth grader this new school year at La Paloma Elementary. He is the son of Ms. Kayla?
Yes.
Kayla Salinas. He is full of energy and enjoys going to school daily. He is always willing to help others. He is also very giving. Hasiel's favorite subjects are math and PE. He enjoys playing chess and basketball. His hobbies include playing with his dog and riding his bike. He loves to go to church with his grandmother, Maria. His short-term goal is to become an altar boy at his church. At this time, Hasiel is still contemplating what he will become as an adult.
Let us bow our heads in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear heavenly Father, I thank you for all the good things that happen in our district. I ask that you bless all of us present here tonight and all that are home. Bless us all with good health and good intentions. I pray for a great school year. Please, Father God, keep us all safe from COVID and any other illness that might keep us from returning to school. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Hasiel and Angie, for being here today. Ladies and gentlemen, you may be seated. At this time, I would like to call on Angie and Hasiel to come to the front. The board members are going to come to the front to greet you, provide you with a certificate for being here today, and we really appreciate you guys and wish you the best school year ever. Parents, before we let you go, we want to let you know how much we appreciate you for being here today and for having two great kids here with our school district. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate you. The next item on our agenda for tonight is public comment. We have two people signed up for public comment. The first person that we have is Ms. Rosalinda Garcia, but before we begin with public comment, let me read a little excerpt here. I will remind our audience members of the board's procedures for handling public comment. The public comment portion of our meeting is available to members of the public who wish to address any topic. Anyone who would like to speak during public comment must sign in prior to the start of the meeting and list the topics they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board for each topic. If more than 10 speakers are signed up to speak on the same topics, all additional speakers on that item shall be limited to two minutes. However, any public testimony speaker who requires a translator will receive up to six minutes to address the board. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Lastly, we ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own. With that said, Ms. Rosalinda Garcia, here to comment on two topics. Welcome, Ms. Garcia. Reminder that you have three minutes per topic.
Good evening, school board and community. My agenda item is 2.1, recognition. On your agenda, you have recognition of 2018-2020 school board. Ana Yáñez will be presented with a plaque of appreciation for fulfilling her duties as a school board member. Though it was brief, her business knowledge was evident in her questions and decisions as a board member. Thank you, Ana Yáñez. Now, the following is a statement from her. Ana Yáñez is out of town and unable to be with us tonight. She appreciates the recognition and support she received as a board member and plans to continue working for the betterment of the district, its students, and staff. Ana Yáñez wishes the board well and for everyone to have an awesome school year. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. I appreciate you being here tonight. Next, for public comment, we have Mr. Aván Osagüera commenting or making a comment on four different topics. Mr. Osagüera, just a reminder that you will have three minutes per topic, so welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity and the chance to speak. I'll be brief. The first topic I wanted to talk about was the advanced child tax credit. For those of us who don't know, this is an advance of the child tax credit that you usually get on your income tax return. If you have a child from zero to six, it's $300 per month; six to 18, it's $250 per month. Now, because of the proximity that the district has with families, I was wondering if there is maybe something that we could do to make sure that all of those parents are getting the full amount of resources that they deserve. I've been employed with the district for the past eight years. I'm here on my own behalf, but, for example, last spring, there was a parent who had six kids but only claimed three on the tax return, and so, for example, maybe a program, maybe FACE or something, could make sure, go through the portal, make sure that those other three kids are accounted for and they receive the amount. Next is vaccinations. I just want to say the district's done a great job providing opportunities. I read something the other day from a doctor. She said that they're able to get eight to 10 times more people on average vaccinated by having vaccination sites at festivals, events, concerts, things like that. They would have a booth for information, and family members, you know, would go, and you see your family member getting vaccinated, so you're more likely to get vaccinated. So I just ask that if we have any events in the future, maybe that's something that we could look into. Next is on mask mandates. Austin, Dallas, and I think most recently San Antonio, if I read correctly, their school districts are mandating masks. I can understand if SPCISD can't do that, but I just want to point to something that we did back in December. We had a symbolic resolution calling for school staff to be considered for vaccinations, and we did that in solidarity with other school districts. It was great. It was fantastic. And I'm asking that the board consider doing that again. We can have a resolution, again, a symbolic, non-binding resolution, asking or demanding the state allow districts the full freedom to implement safety measures that they see fit, and hopefully that's something that we can build momentum here in the Valley and, you know, maybe make things happen. And then for my last topic on spending, I know some of the school board or all of you consider yourself stewards, you know, watchdogs of taxpayer money, and that's appreciated. You've been very diligent with how we've spent on projects in the past and currently, and I just ask that future projects are held to that same high standard, you know, the gold standard, of scrutiny, diligence, and transparency. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Osagüera. That concludes our public comment for tonight. Next up, we go to item 2.1, recognition of 2018 and 2020. Board of trustees, Dr. Carmen.
Yes, sir. Last month, we recognized our trustees who had stepped down from the board over the last couple of years. We want the public to know that we appreciate the service they have done for San Benito CISD. We did invite back those board members who were unable to attend last month, but I will recognize them one more time, and we actually have Ms. Garcia here to receive one of them. Board member M.L. Garcia, who served the board from 2017 to 2020. Board member Angel Mendez, who served two terms from 2014 to 2020. And then Ms. Ana Yáñez, who served from 2020 to 2021. I want to thank them for their service, and Ms. Garcia, if you'd like, we can be happy to give you the plaque on Ms. Yáñez's behalf.
Next item on the agenda is superintendent's reports. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. All these are financials, so I'll ask Mrs. Pettis to present to the board, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So tonight's superintendent's report is going to be consisting of July 1st through July 31st. First up is bank balances. On the cash accounts, we have $2,350,582.48. On the investment accounts, we have $59,458,254.53, for a total of $61,808,837.1. Next up is a comparison of revenues to expenditures, and you're going to notice that it is abbreviated. I cut out the federal funds. We have year zero, year one, year two, for 15 different federal funds, and the percentages on that tends to skew the overall budget. So the revenues and expenditures that you have in front of you right now are exactly the ones that are board-approved, with the exception of the capital projects. I do think it's important that y'all understand where we are with capital projects as far as revenues and expenditures. Now, if you are interested in having federal funds still in the reports, I would be more than happy to do maybe a quarterly report, just so that y'all are still aware of what's going on. So with that, I'm going to go over the general operating fund. Year-to-date realized is $228,511. That's not unheard of. We do have TEA payments in July, however, they belong to the previous fiscal year. Interest in sinking, we have $34,887.25 for a grand total of revenues for the month of July for $263,398.25. And in capital projects, we had $54,618.99 of revenue, for a total of $895,721 that we have received on top of the $40 million that we've gotten from the bond. In expenditures, under the local funds, we have spent $1,428,527.88. That's not uncommon. It takes quite a bit to start up the school year, so the revenues and the expenditures will eventually catch up with itself. In the interest and sinking fund, $348.86, for a total of $1,428,876.74. And in capital projects, we have spent $9,907,474.82. I should move that. Next one. I'm sorry about that. I'll give you a minute. Next up is tax collections reports. So the tax collection report is also going to look different because this is the beginning of the fiscal year. Taxes go up to October, so we're still reporting what we have received from October 1st through today, but in the report, you're going to see July through June. So this month, we received a total of $192,393.40. But overall, in the tax year, we've received $14,651,291.54. That is 97.38% of the tax levy, which is just a little bit better than last year. And next, we'll go into the cash registers. For general fund, we have $1,673,645.48. Student activity, $41,702.1. Nothing for construction projects, nothing for scholarships. Payroll checks, $5,573,619.33. Payroll liability, $850,520.16, for a total of $8,139,486.98 for the month. And if you have any questions about any of the checks, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
Anyone have any questions on the check disbursements?
Or any part of the financials for that matter.
Ms. Pettis, on the travel that's done, there was a travel here to San Antonio. Are those being pre-approved? Because I know that we haven't approved any travel, however. I'm wondering if that's something that's included already, like when you are provided, like the ISO training, the ICOLE, if that was already included?
This was a TEEXCON training, and I'm confident that that was discussed.
The San Antonio one?
And that was discussed way early in the school year.
Okay, and again, I'm going to go to the American Express one. It says buy board for $140,000.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any detail on that?
That one was for Education Galaxy for $128,535. That was board-approved on June 8th. There was various other invoices batched into that one, but the bulk of it was $128,000.
I'm looking at the one that's $140,000.
Correct. There are two, maybe about 15 to 20 invoices batched into that one total, but the biggest price on that one was $128,000, and I do have that information in case you need it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pettis.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Pettis. No further questions. Moving on to consent agenda items. We have consent agenda item 4.1, request approval to accept gifts and bequest for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item 4.2, request approval of budget amendments for 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item 4.3, request approval on proposals on RFP 1220 PCS, professional consultant services district-wide. Consent? Item 4.4, request approval of proposals on RFP 1220 MCSD, meals and catering services district-wide. Questions? Consent? Item 4.5, request approval on proposals on RFP 1220 GMS, RFP, general merchandise and services. I have a question. Consent agenda item on administration, 5.1, request approval of the elementary grading policy for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item 5.2, request approval of the secondary grading policy for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Item 5.3, request approval of the memorandum of understanding between San Benito CISD and the University of Texas at Rio Grande Valley, UTRGV, dual-credit program for fiscal years 2021-22 and 2022-2023. Questions? Consent? Item 5.4, request approval of the memorandum of understanding between San Benito CISD and the University of Texas at Rio Grande Valley, UTRGV, School of Social Work for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item 5.5, request approval of the partnership agreement between San Benito CISD and E3 Alliance related to the United States Department of Education Teacher and School Leader Incentive Program, also referred to as TSL, and a letter of support. Questions? Consent? Item 5.6, request approval of the purchase of Eduforia Premium Suite Edition district-wide for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item 5.7, request approval of revision to policy DEC Local. Questions? Consent? Item 5.8, request approval of revision to policy CH Local. Questions? Consent? Item 5.9, request approval of update to the T-Test Appraiser List for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent? Item 5.10, request approval of the 2021-2022 Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System T-Test Appraisal Calendar. Questions? Consent? Item 5.11, request approval of the 2021-2022 Texas Principal Evaluation and Support System T-PES Appraisal Calendar. Questions? Item 5.12, request approval of board minutes. Question? Consent?
Mr. Moreno?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir.
You just have a housekeeping item. Just as an add-on and abundance of caution, I'm going to recommend that the board remove item 4.1 from the consent agenda for reasons regarding filing on the Conflicted Interest Disclosure Form.
So to remove item 4.1 from the consent agenda, but to be discussed as a possible action item or tabled?
Just as an action item, just so that it can be distinctly noted as a separate agenda item, so that the board can vote on it, or board members will have an opportunity to abstain.
Okay, will do. So at this point, ladies and gentlemen on the board, I would need a motion to approve consent agenda items 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, agenda items 5.1 through 5.10, and 5.12 as submitted.
So moved.
Okay, we have Janie Lopez and Mario Silva. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries, 7-0. 6-0, thank you. One's absent. All right. Going back to consent agenda item 4.1, we'll discuss later as an action agenda item. Going back to 4.5, request approval on proposals on RFP 1220 GMS, RFP, general merchandise and services. And I'm the one that raised a question, and it's a simple question. I will address that to either Ms. Pettis or Dr. Carmen. My question on this is looking at the rationale that was provided to us in our board packet. It does state that, "In addition to making this request, the SPCISD will be in compliance with the purchasing rules and regulations as required by local and state policies." So I'm assuming that when we say we're going to continue to be in compliance with our local and state policies, that includes local policy, correct? So that would continue to fall under the, anything below the $25,000 threshold?
Yes, sir. That's correct, other than the exception for the Child Nutrition Program that was just voted on.
Correct. All right. So in addition to that, my second question is just, once again, and I think, I don't think, I know that I mentioned this during our committee meetings, and once more, I just want to make sure for my own clarification purposes, in looking at these vendors, and I'll go through them, we have Brownsville Sheet Metal Works, we have Environmental Quality Services, General Insulation, Alteca, South K Outdoor Power, South Texas Auction Company. You have assured me, Dr. Carmen, that we're going to continue to follow that $25,000 limit for approval, but is there any way that we can request as a board, or that I can request as a board member, maybe possibly some more explanation as to what purchases we will actually be making when using these vendors, or what is it that we're, what purpose do these vendors serve? What items are usually purchased through these vendors?
You can certainly ask that question. I'm not sure I have the answer off the top of my head. I mean, Sheet Metal Works, I would assume, metal for construction projects, Environmental Quality Air Services, Environmental Quality Services. Mr. Cole, do they provide air quality checks? Are you familiar with Environmental Quality Services LLC? Maybe I'm wrong then. General Insulation, I think that's pretty straightforward. Alteca, Mrs. Pettis, do you have a description on there?
No, sir, I don't.
Mr. Cavazos. South K Outdoor Power Equipment and Sales, again, that's through our maintenance department. South Texas Auction Company, Mr. Cavazos, are you aware of that one? So we get rid of the extra desks and the computers and the...
Yes, sir. That was a local company that visited my office. I just opened up here in San Benito. He just asked if we do auctions. I advised him, you know, usually some of these companies, we just try to solicit if the school district needs them. Doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to buy from every single one of them, but if the need arises, they're there, and we're in compliance with purchasing law.
Okay, I appreciate that response, Mr. Cavazos, and I just want the board to be aware of my concern, and is like, for example, right now, Dr. Carmen, and maybe it should have been discussed in committee meeting a little bit more in length, but when we make reference, and I'm going to use this, not because I'm nitpicking on this company, but when we mentioned Alteca LLC doing business as Hillco, I, you know, present here in the board, including our department leaders and our administrative staff and our finance person, we really don't know what service that they're going to provide us, so that would be a concern to me before we say, okay, we're going to approve them, if we don't know what we're actually going to be buying. approve them, if we don't know what we're actually going to be buying, or, or not necessarily what we're going to be buying, but what services they are to provide. Uh, you know, shelf price for goods and services, I understand, but what goods and services? What are we talking about?
Sir, I believe Hillco is a company that I think the maintenance department uses them out of Harlem. They make tarps and stuff like that.
That's all I need to do here.
Yeah, that's what they do. Uh, the next time that I bring something to us, I'll put a more description of what the companies do, so like that, you can have that.
Awesome, I appreciate it. Just again, for transparency purposes, and it helps us as well, as far as board members, so I appreciate that, Mr. Cavassos.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cavassos, and the reason that it was brought up is, just so the public could know, because they're not seeing what we're seeing, um, on the, on the topic, on where you list, uh, what is purchased from those companies, it only says shelf price for goods and services, and so that really doesn't give us an explanation.
I will put a description of whatever one does.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, with that said, I will go ahead and move that we, uh, I, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the proposals, RFP 1220 GMS, RFP, general merchandise and services as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by myself and a second by Janie Lopez. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries, 6-0. Bringing back item number 5.11, uh, request approval of 2021-2022 Texas Principal Evaluation and Support System, T-PES Appraisal Calendar. Ms. Lopez?
On this one, it's just a simple question, because it, uh, what it says here is that it says it's a draft, so I don't know if that was an error, or if this is the actual document that is going to be used for the T-PES.
Good evening, Board. This is a draft. Um, if you notice at the bottom, it says "Board Approved," we'll add the board approved date, and then it will become not a draft, and we'll publish it to our, our administrators. So they do have a copy as draft for planning purposes, but once it's approved, it'll be final.
Thank you, ma'am. That was the only question I have.
Okay, with that said, I need a motion to request the approval of 2021-2022 Texas Principal Evaluation and Support System, T-PES Appraisal Calendar as written.
So moved.
Mr. Lopez has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ariel, Dr. Cruz has made a second, so we have a motion by Orlando Lopez and Dr. Ariel Cruz, seconds. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries, 6-0. Okay, Dr. Carmen, since we moved, uh, agenda item, uh, consent agenda item 4.1 to an action agenda item, would it be, uh, proper to go ahead and begin with that one prior to moving on to 6.1?
Uh, yes, sir, I believe that would be appropriate under the action agenda.
Okay. So let's go to action agenda item 4.1, request approval to accept gifts and bequest for 2021-2022 school year.
So moved.
Mr. Weller, do, do we need to make any type of disclosure here as far as a, a, any conflict of interest publicly before we go on into a vote?
No, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion by, uh, Mr. Lopez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Rudy Corona. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Two, three, four. Okay, we have five yeas, one abstention, and nobody voting nay, so we have, the motion carries, 5-1. Very good. Thank you. Moving on, uh, ac, action agenda item 6.1, discussion, consideration, and possible approval regarding purchases over $25,000. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir, actually, I'm going to push this over to, uh, Mrs. Pettis if she wants to go over these purchases briefly.
Yes, sir. We have a list of $25,000 purchase orders that we would like to initiate, including vendors Apple Inc., Ariza General Construction, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, Dell Chromebooks, Admentum, Johnson Controls, Lake Shore, Longhorn Bus Cells, Mentoring Minds, Miracle Medical, School Specialty, Thomas Bus, United Healthcare Insurance, and Verizon Wireless. And I do want to note that under United Healthcare Insurance, we don't have them, but we still get some of the, the claims on them, and the amount is for 4 million, but that is just based off of what we paid last year. That is going to stop on September 2021, so it won't be that amount.
Very well. Any questions?
Yes, on the rationale, it says, um, that these are purchases of 25,000 or more regardless of whether the goods or services are competitively purchased and shall require board approval. So my question to you is, are, have all of these been competitively purchased? Have you, uh, checked to see which ones are the, are the best vendors, or which vendor is going to give you the best quality and best prices?
On the, on each of these vendors, you have a cover sheet, and that will tell you on the very bottom what the purchasing method is. Every single one of them have either been purchased through a co-op or quotes.
And when you purchase through a co-op, I know that you do compare prices, right? But when it's a quote, do you compare prices also?
When it's a co-op, they've already gone out for the best prices. When it's a quote, it's because they're not part of any co-ops, and they do, we do require that they have three quotes, at the very least. If it's with federal funds, it's mandated that they have quotes, so it's not something that can go around.
Okay, on the iPads, we had already, you have here iPads and Chromes, uh, which would equal to 250 total of iPads and Chromes together. We had already, uh, approved as a board to go ahead and purchase some iPads and, uh, Chromes as well. Are, is this part of that approval, or is this different?
This is in addition. This is for Frank Roberts Elementary. They're going to be cycling out the younger ones down, if I'm not mistaken, and so the older ones will get the iPads and Chromebooks, and the younger ones will get the ones that the fourth and fifth graders had. So this is one of the campuses that we do need to give a little bit of attention to.
So this is only for Frank Roberts. Is that still part of what had already been approved? Or, and, and my question is, because if we had already bought iPads and Chrome tablets for the students, what's going to happen to those other tablets? Are we overpurchasing, or are we purchasing to make up for students that we hadn't bought for? Uh, can you explain that?
I don't recall if there was a specific campus, or how many went to each campus when we purchased the other iPads, but we do look at what we have on hand, what's actually working. Um, one of the issues that we see right now is that some of the devices are coming back damaged, or they do not have chargers, or, um, it, it's just, it's unfortunate, but we still need to provide these devices for our students, especially with the possibility of remote conferencing coming in.
And the ones that are damaged, are they not under warranty to be replaced?
Sometimes the cost of replacing or repairing them is not worth actually buying a new one. So the answer is no, they're not under warranty for the most part.
Warranty would only cover hardware, though. I mean, it wouldn't cover damages.
Correct.
I got a comment, Ms. Vicky. If I may, Ms. Lopez, are you done, or no?
With that, yes, go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, I want to, I want to thank the staff, because I, I know they go through their due diligence and make sure that they have their, you know, all their ducks in a row, and they, they go through, to follow processes to make sure that when it comes to the board, everything's already, all that stuff is taken care of, and they're going to provide our kids with the, you know, with the best resources for them to succeed. So, uh, I know it's a long, dragged out process, and I just want to thank the staff for, for their due diligence and, and making, making this, uh, you know, uh, come to fruition, because I know it's a lot of work. So I want to, I want to thank the staff for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Any more questions, anyone?
Yes, on Arizpe Flooring, um, I see that this is purchased with ESAR funds, is, uh, it's a purchase of 228,000 for the entire school district, and you all have a list of the different school districts and libraries and veterans, uh, different pods, Veterans Academy and so forth. Um, what, what is the purpose of this purchase of, of replacing the floors?
So just for the record, that is not one of the items. That one was removed because it is a, a larger item that we need to go out for, um, bids. But to answer your question, that's to replace the carpet on all of the campuses, so that we're removing allergens and the possibility of any kind of, of, yeah, infections and, it's for air quality. It's part of ESAR funds that we're going to be purchasing with.
Okay.
But we do have to have a bidding process so that we can get, um, that done correctly as far as the bidding is done. We have an initial amount, and we were going to go with that, but we want to make sure that we're doing the, the process correctly as far as the funds being used for it.
Is that replaced in the old carpet district wide, ma'am?
District-wide in the libraries.
Perfect.
But that one is not for approval for tonight. It was initially, but we removed it.
Okay, all right, and, and I kind of figured that it was something like that, you know, to prevent, uh, from viruses and stuff like that, being airborne in the rooms and so forth. So I'm glad I'm, I asked, and I'm glad that the district is taking that measure to protect our students and with, with that safety, uh, measure that you all are taking. On the, on the, you already covered one of the questions that I had on the medical information. One of them was the United Healthcare, well, because we have Blue Cross Blue Shield, so that was going to be a question, so you already answered that. Um, however, I do have a question on the Miracle Medical. What, what is that company being used for?
We offer diabetic supplies to our employees, and so that is where we purchase them from.
And when you're saying, uh, diabetic supplies, do you mean medicines and...?
Supplies, not medication, supplies.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? There are no further questions. I need a motion to, uh, approve, uh, these purchases as, uh, listed.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Orlando Lopez and a second by Mario Silva. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, 6-0, motion carries. Item 6.2, discussion, consideration, and possible action to appoint a delegate and alternate for the 2021 Delegate Assembly for September 23rd. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Moreno, Board Trustees, we'll appoint one delegate and one alternate to serve as the district's representatives during the assembly in September during the 2021 TASSA-Tasby Convention in Dallas, Texas. This year, delegates will vote on updates to the Tasby Advocacy Agenda, Tasby's Leadership for 2021-22, and changes to the Statement of Beliefs and Tasby Bylaws. So the board will need to nominate and approve one delegate and one alternate.
Do I have any recommendations at this time, Board? You vote, Mr., you want to nominate Mr. Medrano to be a delegate? Since he's not here, he's got to pay, right? Okay? Okay, so we have a, uh, motion to recommend, uh, Mr. Oscar Medrano as a delegate, and Ms. Lopez just said that she will, uh, nominate herself for, uh, the alternate. Okay, so with that said, uh, I need a motion to approve these two, uh, board members, Oscar Medrano and, uh, Ms. Janie Lopez, as a delegate and alternate for the 2021 Delegate Assembly on September 23rd. Do I have a motion? Okay, we have a motion by Mario Silva. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Orlando Lopez. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries, 6-0. All right, action agenda item 6.3, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve Region 1 Education Service Center Library Services for the 2021-2022 school year. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. So Library Services and Instructional Resources Co-op provides a comprehensive collection of high-quality instructional resources and services that help students develop information and digital literacy skills. In addition, schools receive financial benefit from volume purchasing discounts provided through the co-op membership, and you can see there, they give an overview of the services that, uh, we obtain through them if the board should approve. I think our cost is $31,000 and some change, uh, but if you look at the Brain Pop and their programs that are in there, if we were to go out on our own, their estimates of what we're getting, the value we're getting, is over 474,000.
Okay, any questions?
I have some concerns about Brain Pop. Um, I had already heard by different parents concerns that they had about Brain Pop, and, uh, so I did my own research on this, and, uh, I looked up, uh, comments from parents, and this is from commonsensemedia.org. It says, uh, "Just be careful when you subscribe. While I think that this is a great educational tool, I would like to warn parents that this website has several portals which can be confusing when you log on." Um, so that's one of the things that, it may not be user-friendly for, for parents, however, um, it does mention other things that it does talk about sexuality as well. Um, it's promoting sexuality for eighth, for eight-year-olds at third-grade level. It talks about menstruation cycles. It talks about crack, cocaine, and so forth. I know that some of these can be educational for students, but at the same time, uh, we don't need any students learning about the reproductive system at, uh, third-grade level or so forth, and so I feel that this, the Brain Pop could have some inappropriate content. So my recommendation to the board would be that if, if they can, um, look at this Brain Pop and maybe not approve Brain Pop and approve, approve everything else that's on the, on the library. I think that it would be a great resource for our kids to be able to, uh, find books online. I do that all the time in my mental health practice, and, um, uh, I think it would be a good resource for them. However, I don't think that Brain Pop would be a good, uh, tool for the kids to use based on what some of the parents' concerns are. Um, it also is, uh, biased, it says, and it pushes beliefs on students that are political in nature as well, and, uh, um, just a lot of inappropriateness in there. I know that I use Brain Pop. I use some of the videos, but again, I always watch them before I show them to any of my clients. So again, my recommendation is if students are going to have access to this, uh, that it's better that, that Brain Pop not be provided unless, uh, you all are able to remove that content that is inappropriate.
Ms. Alvarado, can you provide, uh, and thank you, Ms. Lopez, for that. Can you provide any additional information on, on what, uh, Ms. Lopez is referring to?
I've used it for years, and I had not heard that. I will look into it, but I have not heard that. That was, that's the first I hear.
Okay, so then my question, uh, you know, this is, and, and I value everyone's opinion. This is an opinion and, and a research opinion evidently from, uh, Ms. Lopez. Um, is this item something that, that if we remove, the total contract, I believe, is 474,782 dollars? So if the board decides, and this is a decision of the board, if they decide to possibly remove that for now until maybe we can look into it a little bit more, can we purchase that or add that to our purchase at a later time, and is that, is that anything that we want to consider at this time? And I open it up for anybody else.
Ma'am, I... Just to clarify, I'm sorry, just to clarify, um, the co-op, if we go forward, would give us access to everything on here. Whether or not we implement it would be the district's decision, but, but the purchase of the co-op would be for the full library services.
So that would be included in the total, in the total price, and it could not be, it, it won't be removed. It's still available. We, the district will choose whether or not to utilize it or not, but it can't be removed altogether?
That, that's correct. This is a, a package of services from the service center, um, similar to probably what every district purchases, including, I'm sure, Rio Hondo. Um, they're, they're all included. It's not, it's not a pick and choose in this particular co-op. It is all the library media services, um, or, or none.
Yes, so, uh, so, Ms. Alvarado, I'm, I'm more sure with this, with this whole situation here with this company, I'm more sure you guys did your due diligence, and, and I'm not going to want to, you know, introduce our kids to things that, that, you know, are going to harm them or, or affect their education in any way, shape, or form. But, uh, you know, the, I think what we need to do is, you know, just really support our staff and, and all the hard work that they did to research these type of companies that are going to help them and to help our kids, you know, grow academically and instruct them to the, to the, you know, to the goal standard that we're, we're trying to push. Uh, so, you know, I, I totally respect your decision. I, I think it's something that we need to move forward with, in my opinion, and also, you know, to table this item and to do more research, how, how would it affect your whole process as far as, you know, the whole instruction situation with the library? How does that work, ma'am?
Well, some of the, the, um, services that are in this, uh, co-op are professional development for our librarians, library services, the Britannica, online Britannica, and I'd like to ask Ms. Cornet, I know, uh, I've had some experience in Brain Pop. I have not heard that. I don't know, do you know anything, uh, Mrs. Cornet? Could you add to that, or Ms. Gomez?
Good evening, uh, Ms. Cornet, and I'd just like to add on that as well, and once again, not to contradict anybody's opinion or anybody's statement, you know, that, that we have researched. However, you know, we use it at our school as well, and like any, any other, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to contradict, but any app or any, uh, program that we utilize, especially nowadays, uh, uh, many apps have the, uh, ability for students to, uh, utilize chat, and that could be detrimental at, at times, correct? And so, my humble opinion would be, uh, you know, that, that, like I said, I, I use it. We use it at our campus, and I, I would, uh, very much expect not only our teachers and staff, but our administration to monitor the student use and ensure, I mean, I'm sure there's, there's, uh, accountability records and, 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 uh, certain, uh, things that, that can be utilized to find, uh, look at the total usage, the daily usage, and what our students are looking at, and so...
And so perhaps, you know, I've never had an issue as well, not to say that there aren't any, but if something comes up in those usage reports, that then we can, we can address it at that time. But I'd love to hear from you, Ms. Cornet and Ms. Gomez as well.
Absolutely, sir. As Ms. Alvarado mentioned earlier, I was not aware also of those concerns. But what we can do is we can go ahead and block it, so it's not utilized until we're able to verify and check it. And then, as we do with some of the programs that we have, the things that we find, like that you mentioned, the chat or like Google Hangout, those things, we block them so they don't have access to them, but they still have access to all the other components that they're able to use.
I like your idea of blocking it, and would that mean all Brain Pop would be blocked or just specific videos?
Because it's broken into different sections. What we can do is we can go in there and monitor it and see what, what resources we have, what we are able to monitor, and we can release items based on what we have accessible to us.
Which you guys pretty much do already, don't you? Before the kids?
We try. You know, sometimes as, when we make some apps available or some programs available, as they're using them, we start realizing that maybe some things are not being used as they are intended, and so then we can go in there and block things.
Okay, great. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I, I make a motion to, to approve the item, however, with the duty of the school district to block any items that have to do with sexuality or biases, political biases that these videos might have.
How do you do that? How does that work?
How does that? I, I understand what, what the, the motion, but Dr. Carmen, can you help out here as well?
Well, yeah, and I'm questioning sexuality comment, I guess. So there, there are health courses on here, which would be age-appropriate, depending on, on whether they're secondary students, and might go along with the curriculum, so, and, and I'm not sure how that motion's going to be followed through with. Maybe we could restate for clarification exactly what the intent is again, maybe? Unless, unless the board's clear.
I see the point that, that, that Ms. Lopez is, is trying to make, and, and I think, I'm not, again, you know, you're, you're your own person, and, and we're here to support each other, all of us, but I'm thinking that, that with the information that we got, with the experience that I've had with the program, with the, the experience of the, the people that are using, using the program and implementing the program, what was basically discussed is that we need to be very vigilant with our student use, look at those usage reports, and if we do have students using it inappropriately or accessing anything that they shouldn't be, in the first place, when we have a program such as Brain Pop or any other program, we don't utilize the full program to its potential. We utilize, we pick and choose what is going to be aligned to our curriculum at, at any given point, and these are just resources. However, with what we discussed, you know, and again, I'll allow you, Ms. Lopez, to make your, your motion, because we're going to need a motion, but I would, I would count on our curriculum people here at the district to really be vigilant and monitor the usage and, and, and determine whether anything needs to be done in, in the future in reference to blocking things that are inappropriate and not necessary.
But I'll turn it over to you again and see if that's a little bit clearer.
And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Moreno, that, you know, that the teachers can monitor, however, if the kids are going to have access to, to this at home, who's going to monitor at home? Nobody will, right? Well, and even if parents, I mean, kids are sometimes doing their homework by themselves because parents are busy cooking or something, you know? And so my concern is just them watching inappropriate stuff, like, for example, you all have, when I was in the middle school as a counselor, there was a class, a health class, that would teach kids about sexual reproduction, right? I mean, and one of the comments that this parent put on here is that they actually have cartoon pictures about this. It says, "I don't understand how students can get a full-blown explanation of human reproduction complete with cartoon pictures without first getting parental consent. If they need a permission slip to learn about reproductive health in class, why are they free, why are they freely able to access this on their own without any adult supervision or guidance?" So, so my concern is there's, teachers are not going to be able to monitor, monitor everything, and by the time a teacher finds out, the student would have already seen, seen the video. That may be inappropriate.
And you stated something that's very true, Ms. Lopez, especially during this pandemic when we had students accessing different venues or different areas with their iPads or Chromebooks at home. We even got parents, also, parent calls also letting us know, "You know what? I want you to take away my child's Chromebook or my child's tablet because they are accessing things that are inappropriate, and I have no control over it because I'm at work or whatever." So you make a very, a very good statement. So with that said, with your concern, I'm going to turn it over to you as well once again, and if we can be, be just a little bit more clear on the motion, and then we'll put it up for a vote.
At this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Weller to see what kind of advice he would give in, in, in making the motion. My motion was to go ahead and, ahead and approve it, however, for the district to put restrictions so the kids wouldn't have access to these videos that have sexual reproduction information for them and any biases on political information.
Yes, ma'am, and I definitely understand the concerns, and I think they're very thoughtful points. And I think the, the only thing that the Board President may be identifying is how would we specify motion language to allow that kind of review to take place? It would be difficult to have something specific in the motion to allow for that kind of clearinghouse without getting into the specifics of what would be allowed and what would not be allowed, without trying to place maybe some type of general parameters on the motion such as will not make available information that is not, to, to children that is not age-appropriate or consistent with their grade levels. The, the, the concerns there being, how would that kind of content be filtered out on an administrative basis in advance? So I, I think that, that, that is the conundrum with that, and I definitely understand the, the motivation behind the motion. I think in, with respect to something like that, what you might need to do if those types of review, if that type of review was possible, would be to sort of defer to the administration to look at what types of materials are available and how you might be able to fashion an approval that would allow them an opportunity to review things at age-appropriate levels in advance of when they were used. And I'm, I'm just kind of thinking out loud in terms of ways to phrase that.
Yeah, while he's thinking out loud, or thinking about it, I remember back when I was in school, 15 years ago, whenever a teacher would show us a video on Brain Pop, because that was around when I was in school, it always was directly related to the curriculum. So if that video is going to be with the curriculum, I don't think there's any need to restrict it or anything like that. For the kids at home, that's kind of just, the district isn't telling you, "Watch this video." It's only telling you to watch it when it's related to an assignment or a lesson in class. I mean, that's how it was used, utilized when I was in school.
Well, I think also, Dr. Cruz, but to, to, you know, to piggyback on what you're saying, I mean, it's true, everything is related to the curriculum, okay, and the flow of the curriculum. So that, that's what this whole process is about, to educate our kids. So I, I just don't think putting parameters like this is going to, is going to negate, you know, any type of, of curriculum, you know, hindrance. So, you know, at the end of the day, whatever they do at home, they do at home, that we have no control over that. But I think to be putting parameters like this, you know, across the board is going to create a lot of confusion, you know, and, and hinder the whole curriculum, you know, instruction of our kids, and I think, I think that's very disturbing.
Yeah, I think the administration is pretty good at, whenever they have a video attached to their curriculum, it's directly related to the curriculum.
Could I ask a quick question, the curriculum? Can, do we, do we have to make all the lessons, all the videos available, or do teachers have the ability to assign specific lessons and videos?
They, teachers have that ability to assign. Ms. Cornet, right?
You know, it's just like anything else. I mean, you know, there's a curriculum needs to be put out, and they need to have the, you know, the, you know, the, the instruction to teach our kids. So if that's part of it, it's part of it. You know, so it's like in any other school. I mean, it's just parameters put in, in other schools, just like this, you know, that they want to put here. So I, I think it's just, you know, I think it's something that we just need to move forward with and allow our, our district and our leaders to do their, their job. Thank you.
Is there any other library online that you can purchase besides the one with Region One that maybe might not have Brain Pop?
I don't know if that's really contained within, within the wording of this agenda item, though. Would that, Mr. Weller, would that be going beyond the scope of this agenda item?
No, no, sir, I wouldn't think so. It's within the context of the subject.
To discuss other, other vendors, other library services?
I, I think the question is simply, are there others? And I think that is barely identified in the agenda item.
Right. Are there others? I mean, because right now, we're only given an option of one. Are there other options that, that maybe don't use Brain Pop that we can consider purchasing for the school district?
Not from Region One. Are there others, possibly?
Okay.
How many years have we been using Region One's library services?
Forever. Well, since you were in school at least, so it's, it's been several years.
So every administration, every teacher is pretty familiar with Region One's library of instructional materials?
I believe so.
So anything, throwing this would be throwing it into an upheaval, correct?
You know, so I think a fair question of Ms. Alvarado, since you've been here, Ms. Alvarado, or any principals here that might want to, that might want to comment on this, have you ever had any issues with this program? So once again, our, our staff and our administration decide to go this route, right? So I support our staff and I support our administration on this project. Thank you.
Okay, so you're saying that this has been in place before, but this is not a renewal. This is for new approval. So when was the last time that you all had it?
The Co-op is, it's part of the Co-op every year. Every year we have this in our, as part of the Co-op.
Okay, do I have a motion on the floor?
I had started the motion to approve with, if we can't put specific parameters, then the district will need to monitor this program. Or, Mr. Weller, did you come up with anything?
In terms of monitoring, you know, from the standpoint of compliance with curriculum and maybe just a general request that this, for age appropriateness, that, I think that's really about the only meaningful parameters you can place on it. So that may already be occurring, though, that will probably get to the, the intent.
Okay, so at this point, we, we've been, I'm going to hold you to that motion, Ms. Lopez, however, I do, I, I'd like to just add, I mean, we have a full room of our principals. I think the, the, for the most part, they're all here. We agree that we haven't had this issue come up. You have heard our discussion, you have heard our concerns, you have heard the concern that Ms. Lopez brought up. So, you know, I'm going to let her make the motion, but, but however, just with that, with that, to ascertain that I trust you guys, I know, you, you know, our kids are in your hands, I'm an administrator as well, and so if any issues come up, then you're going to do what you need to do. And once again, I go back to the usage. The usage would, will tell you easily what these kids are accessing, and there's a lot of valuable information in these videos, and once again, teachers pick and choose according to what they're teaching. So just because, you know, I'd just like to mention that because you're here in front of us in this meeting, you understand what our expectation is, and I, I would recommend that if, you know, we, we go ahead and make a motion, but just with that, with that agreement that you will help by monitoring our students.
And if you do find any inappropriate videos, to please let, I don't know who, it would be Ms. Alvarado or Dr. Carmen, who, who would they tell if they do find any inappropriate videos?
Yeah, they'd report to their director. So if they're elementary, they report to Mrs. Cornet, secondary to Mrs. Gomez, and they would deal with it appropriately.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Lopez, you want to go ahead and go back and make the motion, or you want somebody else to make the motion?
I'll let someone else make it.
I'll make it.
Okay.
A motion that we approve.
That we approve as written?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Orlando Lopez, move.
Second.
Rudy Corona, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, five. All those opposed? Okay. Motion carries, five one. Moving on to agenda item 6.4, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve the memorandum of agreement between San Diego CISD and Rio Grande Valley Linking Economic and Academic Development, RGV LEAD for the 2021-2022 school year. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask Ms. Alvarado to address this, please.
Thank you. Board of Trustees, Dr. Carmen, RGV LEAD is a nonprofit organization that works closely with our high schools in, in Region One. I've worked very closely in the last eight years with RGV LEAD. It's, it's a wonderful program. They allow for counselors to have those P-16 meetings. They also assist with the ambassador program, scholars program. I know Samyel High School is involved, and they train our students for, to be ambassadors. Those ambassadors work throughout at events and things like that, teach them leadership skills. They also offer internships and, and externships, not only for students, but for, for our, our staff as well. It's an excellent program. I know I spoke to Mr. Daimis about it as well, and they, we use it in Samyel High School, especially with our ambassadors program.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarado. Any questions? Okay, at this point, I would need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between San Diego CISD and RGV Linking Economic and Academic Development for, RGV LEAD for the 2021-2022 school year.
A motion to approve.
Okay, that was a kind of a tie, so we can have a motion by Ms. Lopez. Do I have a second? Second by Mario Silva? Okay, we have a motion by JD Lopez and a second by Mario Silva. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Two, three, four, five. All those opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Agenda item 6.5, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the transfer and or use of COVID-19-related leave days by employees during the 2021-2022 school year, and any action or provision of authority to the administration related thereto. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. This agenda item was requested by Dr. Ariel Cruz. I believe this relates to the federal government, the days they gave last year for people who were needing the days if they had COVID or had to be quarantined because of close contact. And I think the consideration is whether we can extend that into the 21-22 school year if employees didn't use it. Dr. Cruz?
Yes, so exactly what Dr. Carmen said. This was brought to my attention, that last year, if the days went unused, if there was any way that we could possibly roll them over into this year. I talked to Dr. Carmen about it. He was, he agreed that we could put it on the agenda. I believe there was a discussion with Mr. Weller, and Mr. Weller has some more information on that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. And we have looked into this question on, and evaluated what the district's abilities are on it. So specifically speaking, the, the use of the, the days that are available under, you know, federal programs such as the Families First Coronavirus Act, those cannot be captured and rolled forward, per se. There are circumstances where school districts around the state have done, taken steps to create local leave that is the equivalent of days that were unused as of the date that some of those federal programs providing COVID-related leave expired. The most recent of those federal programs will expire in September of this year. So there, there have been districts that have taken steps to make local leave available. There are provisions in the education code that allow you to make local, additional local leave available, and what school districts have done on this topic is create criteria for which types of folks would demonstrate the eligibility for this types of local, these types of local leave, and then establish that in a resolution, a board resolution, present that board resolution to the board after conferring with the administration about what those criteria would be, and then have the board approve the creation of additional local leave.
If I may, one of the things that, that, that Mr. Weller alluded to, and, and I think we're all in agreement, that this was a provision that was given to schools statewide as far as helping people out during this, the peak of COVID, and the, I believe it ended December 31st of 2020, and then... And then districts were given the opportunity, as it was given to us as a board, those of us that were here at that time, to extend that till the end of the school year, which we did. Okay, there's a couple of things that come to play in my mind, and I don't want to negate what I say, but, you know, first and foremost, looking at school districts across the state, most, if not all, have provided our employees opportunities to get vaccinated. And again, this is not something that we can mandate. They have the option. But many, many, many adults, many, many school staff and personnel have taken that option to get vaccinated. And so on one end, I would think, you know, those that chose not to get vaccinated and come down with a COVID, and I'm not trying to be ugly in any way, but you were provided that opportunity and you chose not to. So then, I'll give you an example. As of right now, in my school district where I work, you're on your own. However, now to basically add on to what I just said, right now, we're clearly seeing, as a community, as a state, as a nation, that despite being vaccinated, you can still contract that virus. You may not get as sick, but there are still people being lost. So I feel, you know, that this is a good idea, and that if we can, we may not be able to vote on the action item tonight, but with the assistance of Mr. Weller, if we can collaboratively come up with a, or have Mr. Weller propose a resolution to the board, that this is a very good idea. We don't, you know, we don't want anyone to lose our lives. And then another discussion that I had earlier today was that, you know, as bad as it is to, and as bad as it may sound, you know, I remember back in the day when I first started teaching, you know, I have 10 days off. You get five local, five state, you know? And back then, when I was a rookie teacher, I'm like, hey, I've got 10 days to take off. And that is the mentality of some of our staff members. And I'm not talking about any of you guys, but, you know, that is some of the mentality of some staff members coming on board, you know? But, and so then when we have these staff members being, you know, having to stay out because of contracting COVID, that's 10 to 14 days gone. And then you're, you know, you're trying to scrounge around for extra days. So I think this is a very good idea. I really do.
So I had brought this up last week, and unfortunately, it wasn't able to be made for the agenda tonight. But I do agree with these things, creating a criteria, making a board resolution, and hopefully, we can bring something to the agenda.
I think also, Dr. Cruz, since we went through this whole COVID crisis, you know, for the past year already, I think we need to be extremely vigilant as far as, you know, what our plan is moving forward, to have a plan. Because right now, the numbers are creeping up again, unfortunately. It doesn't seem to be getting any better anytime soon. But I think at the end of the day, you know, like the board wishes, and Dr. Cruz, it was a great idea. We're here to take care of our staff as best as we can, you know, so with the resources that we have. So, you know, hopefully, you know, we can come up with a plan here pretty soon and get with the attorney as well. Because there is going to be staff that is going to get sick, and they're going to run out of days. We've already gone through this before. So, but, you know, at the end of the day, if our staff is not healthy, then our kids are not getting educated. So it's a big concern to me, because I'm on the front line myself, so I see it daily. So I just want, you know, our staff to know and everybody here that we're doing the best that we can with the resource that we have, to make sure that you guys have the resources you need to educate our kids. So I appreciate the board. Thank you.
Okay, so with that said, there's no action at this point. However, it's a great discussion, great idea, and we'll depend on you, Mr. Weller, to help us develop a resolution. And possibly, if we don't have a special board meeting scheduled in the upcoming days, then we can bring it up with the next regular board meeting.
And there are a number of things and ways that these types of resolutions can be crafted. You can consider things such as addition of eligibility for sick pools of sick leave days. You can evaluate in which order it needs to be used in relationship to local leave. You can, there are considerations regarding what amounts to a qualifying event. Would it be the employee, or would it be an immediate family member that could also have tested positive or be under the care of a physician? So there are a number of things like that. And I think that we can craft something that makes a lot of sense and potentially present some options to the board in collaboration with recommendations from the administration about what makes sense for the citizens and employees of San Bernardino ISD.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item 6.6, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Revision to the 2021-2022 School Year Calendar. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. Actually, I think this was proposed by Dr. Cruz as well. The day, the weather makeup day on February 7th was the day after the Super Bowl, but the NFL changed the season. There's been a change to the season. Added an extra regular season game in, so I think the proposal is to move that to the 14th. Otherwise, we'll have nobody at work on February 14th.
And we also want to celebrate the Dallas Cowboys won the Super Bowl.
I move, Mr. Moreno.
Okay, Orlando Lopez moves that we revise the 2021-2022 school year calendar. Ariel Cruz, seconds. Any discussion? I guess we shouldn't have discussion. We already made the motion and seconded, so all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, 6-0. Motion carries. Okay, last item on the action agenda, 6.7, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action of Revisions to the 2021-2022 Compensation Plan. Dr. Carmen?
Action, I turn this over to Dr. Cruz.
Thank you, Dr. Carmen. We have a few revisions to propose. The first is on page 16. We are clarifying the stipend, COVID recovery stipend. We added the words "all full-time personnel" for clarification. The line underneath, "COVID recovery, continuity of hourly employment, full-time hourly personnel new", is an additional $500. We're also adding the gold standard employee monthly recognition for those employees who are being recognized. It's a one-time stipend for $100. On page 17, under Project Rise, this is to align with the Project Rise funds that are allowed to our Miller Jordan campus as the grant is ending. COVID-19 retention for returning teachers and campus administrators, $2,000. To our auxiliary pay scales, we are adding executive chef and CNP area supervisor to pay grade nine. And to our clerical pay grade five, we are revising the name PRC Behavior Aid to PRC Behavior Assistant to align with PMS coding and job description.
Dr. Cruz, can you tell us a little bit more about the criteria and how many awards we're looking at when we are talking about the gold standard employee monthly recognition? Is this per campus? Is it per district? I mean, is it just one per district, or how are we looking at that?
These are awards that we provide monthly to our employees. Our different departments and campuses, they recognize employees at their level, and then those go up to a higher level, to the district level. And a committee selects three personnel across our district per month to recognize. And then our superintendent leadership team visits them in their assigned areas, and it's been a very positive reaction for our employees and departments.
And I've seen pictures. I just wasn't sure if there was a limit or if there was a set number per month, per week, whatever. So that's a good explanation. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question. So I did see those same pictures. Was this available last year? Are we going to honor last year's employees with this?
So this is starting for this school year?
So last year's employees?
Last year's, we started it in the spring. They were provided gift cards that were donated to us by, you know, various entities that we partner with. And so that will continue this year, and with the additional $100. We had such a positive, you know, response to it that we wanted to provide a little something extra and encourage our employees to reach that gold standard that we all strive for.
Okay, my next question, if I may, I'm sorry, Dr. Carmen, I didn't mean to cut you off. I saw you were trying. But a question under the COVID-19 retention for returning teachers and campus administrators. Is this what we had discussed previously, where we were going to do the zero-to-four-years 500? Or is this something totally different?
No, sir. This is for Project Rise. These are funds that come from the Project Rise grant through Region 1. Miller Jordan Middle School is part of that grant. It is ending. Their advisory committee opted to allow additional funds to be expended for this reason, and we're just adding it to our compensation plan so that we can pay it out.
Okay, thank you. And then one more thing for me. At the committee meeting that we had last week, I raised a question, and so this question is for you, Ms. Pettis. I raised a concern and question in reference to these positions, moving them to pay grade nine. We have an executive chef, and we have the child nutrition program area supervisor. I don't have any qualms or any concerns as far as the child nutrition program area supervisor. What I would assume that that entails is we have Ms. Soto, who is our food service director, and we have a total of 18 campuses across the district. So to have one person monitor the food service program and all those, you know, it's almost, it's a daunting task and almost impossible. So I can see that. My question during the committee meeting was the executive chef, when I asked, you know, this is a new, I don't know if it was a new position, but the response that I received was it was already budgeted for. Now, my question is, we had SFE last year. And because I'm familiar with SFE, I know that part of the SFE program includes one or two chefs, maybe more, okay? We opted as a district to get rid of the company, cut our losses if we had any, okay? And so in my mind, I would just like to entertain some discussion or any type of clarification as to why we need a chef. Now, before we engage in that, I understand that last year, we had a chef, because again, we had SFE. Because of COVID, you know, I would think that we want a chef in place to maybe present some creative meals or things of that sort for our students. But we didn't have hardly any students on campus, so the opportunities for our chef to showcase their talents and to showcase what they can do was very limited. So with that said, once again, I reiterate that we opted as a district to no longer partner up with SFE. So I'd like a clarification, if not by Ms. Pettis, maybe our food service director, as to why we would need a chef onboard.
Yes, sir. If I could invite Ms. Soto up, that way she can, she had a very clear plan and a vision of what she saw for our child nutrition department. Good evening, board members. Dr. Carmen, thank you for the question, Mr. Moreno. That is a very good question. And the reasoning for a chef, and like you said, when we hired this company, it was a great opportunity for them to show and assist the program in educating our children in nutrition education and also dressing up our food lines. Unfortunately, that wasn't able to happen because of COVID-19. But I think this will be a great opportunity for us as a district and the program to have that available, because it is very important to educate not only our students, but our parents in nutrition education and what we do behind the scenes, the chef will also be responsible for. With all the TDA guidelines that we have to follow, there's only so much sodium, so much fat, so much, the guidelines that we have to follow, a chef will bring in their expertise to help us provide better tasting and enticing nutrition meals. Not that it's not happening already, but they'll have that opportunity to educate our teachers, administrators, and students by all means in nutrition education.
Okay, so at this point today, we do not have a chef onboard, but that's a possibility of bringing one on in the future, correct?
Absolutely, sir. No, we do not have a chef onboard as we speak.
Okay, and if we do in the future contract, or not contract, but decide to recommend and approve a chef, is there any learning going on there between your cafeteria managers? You know, we would hope that, you know, whatever he or she, as a chef, brings to the table, there can also be some learning so that it can be done across the board in all the districts and not expect one chef to do the job at 18 different campuses.
Absolutely, sir. We are a team, and what one learns in one end goes all the way down to, from top to bottom. Everybody will learn it, and that way, if questions are asked as we go forward, we're able to answer and assist in all different areas. Absolutely. It will not be a one-person effort.
That was an awesome explanation. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Ma'am, I do have a question before you leave. You mentioned that the chef would know the nutritional value of the food. Do you have a dietitian right now or a nutritionist that does that?
No. What I said, that the chef will use their expertise to assist in the, I don't want to use the better tasting foods, but because of TDA, we are minimized to use so much sodium, so much fat. And with the expertise of a chef, without using those items, that's their expertise in child nutrition, because he's not only a chef in general in the private sector, he's a chef in child nutrition. So that makes it even better, you know, because he'll assist us. We follow the guidelines. We follow TDA guidelines. And yes, to your question, we do have a consultant dietitian that we use when we have those special diet requests. I have 20 years' background experience in nutrition education and in child nutrition that I've also been able to use my expertise in that as well. Any other questions?
Any more questions, anyone? Thank you, Ms. Soto. Appreciate you. Thank you. I'm sorry? Oh. Okay, so at this time, I need a motion to approve the revision.
Mr. Moreno, before you make a motion. On the bus driver pay, we hadn't discussed that one yet. I know that a concern was brought to our attention about other districts nearby paying more and so forth. And so I know that we had discussed that with Dr. Cruz, because there was a concern that maybe we could lose bus drivers, and it would be hard for our students to get to school on time in the mornings if we did lose bus drivers. So I was going to ask, is this the bus driver pay that you included here? Is that because of that?
That is one reason, yes, ma'am. That is one reason, yes. It does include our bus drivers.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Any more questions, anybody?
It says additional stipend. Is that a one-time thing? Or is that for the next three years, like with the ESAR funds? Or how is that going to be paid out to them?
The COVID recovery, continuity of hourly employment, full-time hourly personnel, it is a one-time $500 stipend, and it is secure for the next three years.
Okay. I thought maybe there was a separate one, because it's listed under rationale on the agenda item details as number four bus driver pay. But that includes all the hourly, then, all the hourly personnel that are returning? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Compensation Plan?
So moved.
Dr. Carmen and Mr. Moreno, recall that the recovery continuity stipend is the matter that we exchanged some correspondence about over the weekend in terms of approving that with a resolution.
Say, what was that?
What'd he say? Can you please repeat that, Mr. Weller?
Yes, sir. Dr. Carmen and Mr. Moreno, recall that the COVID recovery and continuity stipends is the matter that we exchanged some correspondence about over the weekend in terms of approving that in conjunction with the board resolution.
All right, so is it your advice that we table that one component of the compensation plan? Or that we pass it pending the resolution to come to the board, Mr. Weller?
The latter of those two. You could approve it with the only qualification being that the approval of the COVID components would be continued upon the consideration and adoption of a board resolution.
COVID components pending resolution?
Correct.
Is this a separate resolution to the one that we discussed earlier for the leave?
Yes, ma'am, it is. This is a topic that we identified over the weekend on Saturday as a best practice is involved with board giving consideration to a resolution at the time that these stipends are approved. And that is similar to what other school districts have done.
So, Mr. Weller, I have a question for you. I'm assuming you reviewed this whole agenda item before it was put in place, correct?
I reviewed the agenda item. The question about the adoption of a resolution is a question that...
No, I'm talking about the stipend.
The stipend?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, that's what we're talking about here. So I'm assuming you saw it prior, to make sure that the language was correct, so we can vote on it tonight. Or am I missing something?
No, the question was posed to me last week, and Dr. Carmen and I and Mr. Moreno looked at it and said that it's probably just fine, but, you know, what other school districts have been doing on this particular topic is adopting it in conjunction with a board resolution. And I identified a number of examples where other districts felt that that was the best way to show the existence of public purposes. So it was a topic that came up last Friday and over the weekend.
Okay, so basically, just for clarification purposes, Mr. Weller, if we make a motion, it is a motion to approve the revisions to the 2021-2022 compensation plan with the COVID components, the COVID stipend contingent on a resolution, a future resolution. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, with that said, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I have Orlando Lopez. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'd like, okay, so we have a motion by Orlando Lopez and second by Janie Lopez. All those in favor, raise your right hand to approve the compensation plan as stated. So all those in favor? Okay, six zero. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is closed session. In accordance with Texas Government Code Open Meetings Act, the board may move into closed session for the following reasons. Section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. With that said, we go into executive session. It is 7:07. Okay, it is exactly 9:01, and I call this meeting back to order. Item 7.1, employment, resignations, retirements, and terminations. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. I'd recommend to the board that they approve the employment resignations, retirements, and termination as discussed in executive session.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Lopez moves to accept resignations, retirements, and terminations as presented in executive session. Do I have a second? Second. Rudy Corona, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Two, three, four, five, six zero. Motion carries six zero. Oh, correct, correct. So let's go again. So we're going to have, all those in favor for accepting this is one, two, three, four, five, with one abstention, correct? Dr. Cruz? Okay. Item 7.2, Level Three Grievance, that has been rescheduled to our next regular board meeting. Item 7.3, Level Three Grievance, no action taken. So we move on to, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay, Rudy Corona and Mario Silva, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries six zero. Good night, everyone. Thank you.